Well, good afternoon. I'd like to call the Pitt County Planning Board meeting into order.
All right. The first item on your agenda is a roll call. I'll take care of that tonight. Fred Austin?
Present.
Michael Best?
Present.
Naomi Buck?
Here.
Lisa Ellison?
Here.
Thompson Forbes?
Present.
Sharon Gray?
Present.
Rita Jackson Gilbert?
Here.
Lyman Hardy?
Here.
Minnie Johnson Anderson?
Here.
Charles McGlawnhorn?
Here.
And Michael White?
Here.
All right, Mr. Chairman, you do have a call.
Thank you, Jonas. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a prayer led by Mr. Hardy.
That is great. The most gracious heavenly Father, we give you praise and thanks, Lord, for this beautiful day. We ask that you be with this committee tonight, Lord, as we go about the business of the planning board, that decisions I'll make will be right, and we please unto you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In closing, your packet was the minutes from last May. It's been awhile since we've adjourned. And if anybody has any changes or notes to make of the minutes, please speak. I don't have anybody asking for any changes or adjustments, so we have a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion we approve the minutes.
I second.
Motion has been received and approved, seconded. All those in favor of approving the minutes? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. I'd like to open up the public address of the board. I don't think there's anybody here today that would publicly address the board, so we're going to quickly start closing as well. Mr. Jonas, I believe you're on deck.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Austin. Our first matter is an administrative matter. Some of you older members might have seen some new faces when you came in tonight. That is due to the fact that we had new appointments. So, some of our older members have rotated off. Last month was their last month to serve on the board. We appreciate their service to the planning board. Ms. Sharon Gray has been appointed for District B. Michael Best has been reported, appointed for District C. Ms. Rita Jackson Gilbert was appointed for District 2, and Mr. Michael White for District 5. So, along with those appointments, we did have two reappointments. Those were Lyman Hardy and Charles McGlawnhorn. And both of those members are at-large members. So, welcome back to your second tour. Thank you, thank you all for your willingness to serve on the Pitt County Planning Board. With that, we need to elect our new Chair and Vice Chair of the Pitt County Planning Board. So, I will turn it over to Mr. Austin, as a senior leader of the board at the moment, to handle the election of a Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is receive any nominations, open nominations, for the Chairman of the Planning Board.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend you as the President, Chairman, excuse me.
Do we have any others?
If that was a nomination, I'd like to second it.
I second.
So, we have, we do have a motion on the table for an election of myself as the Chair of this board, and it's been seconded.
Yes.
We need to close the nominations, or if there's any other nominations?
I'll move the nominations to be closed. I second.
Apparently, it's been closed. I received the closure of nominations. So, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Opposed. I think the motion carries. All right. So, the second order of items would be for the Vice Chair. And I'd like to open up the nominations now for the Vice Chair.
I nominate Michael Best.
I second that, this motion.
We have a motion of Michael Best that has been seconded. Do we have any other nominations?
I make a motion that nomination be closed.
I second.
We're taking some quick action here this afternoon. So, the motion is for Michael Best to be our Vice Chair, and has been seconded, and the nominations are closed. All those in favor of Michael Best being Vice Chair? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right. The next item on your agenda, well, along with that, we also need an appointment of Executive Secretary. Typically, that is the Planning Director. Myself has served in that role for many years since the Planning Board has existed, so we need an appointment of the Executive Secretary to the Planning Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Jonas. You're going to serve for many more years. I second that.
Okay. Board, we have received a motion and a second to have Mr. Jonas Hill be our Executive Secretary of our board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I think that motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. You have to rework the Chair if the Vice sits next to you.
If you guys want to take a brief moment to reorganize that the Chair, Chair is sitting at the correct place, that the Vice Chair wants to move over to the appropriate place, we can do that now and resume the meeting once we get back.
I want to sit beside my.
You ain't got to go all over there. That's fine.
Be careful with that chair.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order.
We have rearranged our seats. Welcome, Mr. Best.
Thank you.
I think we have some administrative, no, actually, we've completed our administrative matters. We now have a rezoning request that Ben is going to take us through.
Good evening, everyone. We do have one action item this evening dealing with our zoning, as the Chairman just mentioned. So, this is a rezoning request submitted by Mr. Timothy Moore. The request is to rezone 3.1 acres of his property. This is parcel number 07946. It is located on the western side of NC 11 North, just north of this intersection with State Mill Road, and the request is to go from rural residential to general commercial conditional district to allow for the operation of appliance and general merchandise sales. Location map there on your screen, you see it's just north of the city of Greenville jurisdiction, and actually, this parcel is the very first parcel on the west side of NC 11 as you're kind of going up through the county that is in Pitt County's jurisdiction. Some site pictures of the property. You see there is an existing warehouse on the property. Just to give some background on the history of this property, back when zoning was adopted in 2003, this structure was on-site. I believe at the time, it was used for personal storage, so it was not zoned commercial. Since then, we have new ownership who, when they purchased it, did not realize that to operate the commercial business out there, had to go through this process to rezone it to commercial. Nothing they did on purpose to try to violate any rules, but like I said, that warehouse has been on-site for a very long time, pre-zoning, and our belief is that it was kind of used for personal storage, and when zoning was adopted, it was zoned as residential, and since then, had not been used for commercial until now. This is looking at the site as well. There are a couple of storage barns on display on the property. This is looking north on NC 11 towards Bethel. This is looking south back towards Greenville. This is just to the south of the property, is some agricultural use. Directly behind the property, there is a residence. That's that white house a little bit further in the background. That's directly behind the property in question. And on the other side on NC 11, the northern side of the property, is also used for agricultural. Directly across the street is wooded kind of undeveloped property, and this is the existing land use map of the area. You kind of see the existing land use of the property being commercial since it's being used as that, but also the orange residential directly behind it. But otherwise, in general, it is very rural and agricultural with not much development in general. The Envision Pitt County 2045 Land Use Plan, the future land use map, does identify this property as suburban residential. That future land use designation does contain primarily single-family detached homes and neighborhoods with interconnected streets. Non-residential uses within this character area should be located with frontage and access to a major highway or secondary road, or at a major intersection or proximity to similar uses with spatial separation or buffers between incompatible uses. Non-residential development should be designed in a context-sensitive manner and may be considered on a case-by-case basis in a conditional zoning district. Some more information about the suburban residential designation. Typically, it's existing residential and commercial development and in areas experiencing significant growth within the county. The uses are typically single-family detached homes, manufactured homes, duplexes, some agriculture and agribusiness, limited multifamily, commercial, office, light industrial, and public or institutional uses. Utility access is typically on septic systems with community water service. Public sewer may be available in these areas with voluntary annexation, typically would be in Greenville since everything out in the county is on sewer, or on septic, excuse me. And density varies from 1 to 3 dwelling units per acre, depending on that sewer availability. The current zoning map, you see everything in the county jurisdiction is zoned RR. That's our rural residential zoning district. Again, the applicant is proposing to rezone to general commercial. The general commercial zoning district is intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate-density multifamily residential uses in areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the necessary utilities to support such development. And a conditional zoning district allows for the approval of a specific use with reasonable conditions to assure the compatibility of the proposed use with the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties. And again, the proposed use is appliance and general merchandise sales. With the conditional zoning district request, a sketch plan is required, not a full-on-site plan at this phase of the process. So, just want to highlight a few things. So, the proposed rezoning area there is highlighted in red dash line. There are a couple of existing structures, again, that large warehouse, as well as a smaller shelter there on the right side of the screen. There are some existing storage containers that my understanding are just used for kind of backstock of the business, as well as those display barns that I noted in one of the pictures. The existing gravel driveway, there's existing screening and vegetation specifically along the rear of the property that provides a pretty well, a pretty good buffer between that residential use directly behind it. And the applicant is also proposing to add at some point another storage building to kind of accommodate the growth that the business is experiencing. So, this is the sketch plan that was required for the submittal of the application. If required, a more professionally drawn site plan would be required, or if approved, a site plan would be required and be sent out for review. So, Pitt County Planning Staff does find that this request is consistent with the Envision Pitt County 2045 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The area requested for rezoning is designated as suburban residential on the future land use map, and the uses in the area are predominantly agricultural with limited residential land uses. Additionally, the site has frontage on a major state highway being NC 11 North. Planning Staff also finds that this request is reasonable and in the public interest because there is very limited residential development directly adjacent to the proposed commercial use, and additionally, the proposed use will be screened and buffered from adjacent residential properties. So, Staff does recommend approval with the following additional conditions. So, no zoning compliance permits shall be issued until a site plan prepared in accordance with Appendix B of the zoning ordinance is submitted to Pitt County Planning for review and approval. A landscaping plan is required, and the property shall be screened from any adjacent residential zoning district or residentially used loss by a buffer yard. Additionally, a highway buffer yard is required along the entire property line adjacent to NC 11 North. That buffer yard shall be planted in accordance with the requirements of Section 7D of the zoning ordinance, which is the highway corridor overlay requirements. Required parking spaces in the access drive and loading areas shall be paved and maintained with concrete, asphalt, or similar material of sufficient weight and thickness and consistency to support anticipated traffic volumes and weights. Soil erosion and sedimentation control plan approved by an engineer shall be submitted for development of this property that results in land disturbance that's over 1 acre. The site must comply with the Pitt County Stormwater Ordinance for nutrient control. Nutrient loading and peak flow calculations shall be reviewed and approved prior to any improvements involving more than 1 half acre. Must comply with any emergency management requirements for fire protection, and all required permits from Pitt County inspections to occupy any proposed structures and comply with any applicable environmental health requirements for wastewater disposal. And finally, they must obtain a commercial driveway permit from NC DOT and comply with all requirements for access to the subject property. So, public comments will not be entertained by the Planning Board. The Planning Board will then make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, who are currently scheduled to hold a public hearing on November 18th at 6:00. And I will turn that over to you, Chairman, for the public comments. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have as well. The applicant is here this evening. He didn't sign up to speak, but I think he's available if there's any specific questions that I am unable to answer.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I have a question of Ben.
Yes, sir.
Explain to me, I mean, as I look at this, it looks like it's a series of metal buildings in the middle of the country. Can you explain to me how that's context-sensitive?
So, I will say again, the history of that site, being that that warehouse has been out there since pre-zoning. Understand your question completely. My understanding, and I'll get Mr. Moore to verify this, but those Conex containers, if the new proposed building to replace those? Yeah, so, those Conex containers would be replaced with that new building if this was all approved down the line, because they're just kind of used for storage. I will say that this being on 11 North, just outside the city of Greenville, it is the country. There are just little buildings out in the country, but I think that's an area that the department kind of sees as future development, kind of continue that way as Greenville's owned and continues to grow. That area could be annexed in the next 10 years for all I know, so.
But is that what we want Pitt County to look like?
I think that's a decision this board needs to make, and I think you'll.
I think it does, too.
Yeah, and I think you'll remember during our land use plan discussions, we had that context sensitivity question, you know?
Yes, sir.
And that maybe, yeah, I think you left some of that conversation, but it could be something with the reasonable.
The idea behind context sensitivity is to, to continue what we are continuing, whatever has already been there, and not to put metal buildings in the middle of our rural areas of Pitt County. That's just a comment that I'll make, Mr. Chairman. So, and I'm not, I'm not complaining, I'm just making a point. Because I've been to other areas. I've been to Jacksonville, and Richlands, and Kinston. I don't know if you all go to other places, but there are other areas that do that. They put metal buildings in the middle of nowhere. And we used to do it before we had countywide zoning. Anyway, that's my comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other comments? Any, I would like to open it to the, any public comments, but I don't think we have anybody registered for the public comments, so we'll move on with just our board.
My question is, maybe I didn't see it, but in the initial drawing, there was supposed to be, I think, some parking spaces that were planned, and will that be included in the future park plan, or, because I didn't see it in the initial drawing?
Yes, ma'am. So, at this point of the process, what the county basically decided for this conditional district is that a sketch plan like this can be hand-drawn and submitted to the board, because our thought was, if it was to get denied, we didn't want applicants to go spend money with an engineer surveyor to kind of have a professional site plan. But if it is approved, and one of the conditions, the first one was that a site plan must be prepared by, you know, a professional, but also that landscaping plan, and at that time, it's going to have to show the appropriate parking spaces as required by the zoning ordinance. Again, those spaces will have to be asphalt or similar material. That screen will have to be shown at that time. We'll be counting the bushes and shrubs to make sure that's appropriate and lined up. So, it's not really shown on here. This was more to give a general idea of what's out there. But yes, ma'am, if this is approved and recommended to the Board of Commissioners, and they approve it ultimately, before any permits will be issued, that full site plan review, and that's sent out to the NC DOT, it's sent out to Environmental Health or Septic, there's a full-fledged review at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question myself of the staff. The residents behind this proposed zoning request, is, is the resident involved in this business at all?
No, they're not. My understanding with speaking with the applicant, they know the neighbor and haven't had an issue with it, and I haven't heard from them with our notice that was sent. That's just the current, you know, they haven't received any phone calls in opposition. They do share a driveway.
That was my next question.
This driveway, the second driveway, the northernmost driveway, that, that neighbor does use that driveway as well, so you can kind of see it.
So, is there already use in any place?
I believe so. For the access to that property, that would have been done when that was first kind of blocked off. Yes, sir.
Should the proposed plans include that driveway?
Yeah, so it's, let me show you back on the, so it's this driveway right here, and it kind of cuts back here and kind of circles around to the residence back there. And again, let's see if the picture shows decent, there's a pretty established row of trees back there that kind of, this row of trees right here, and there's even more kind of on the property in question this evening that provides a pretty good buffer. And again, speaking with the applicant, they've told me they have a good relationship with that property owner, and we haven't heard any opposition or support of it either way. And again, they would have been sent notice as being within 500 feet of the subject property, so.
How far beyond the law, Martin, people's common, is this?
Mr. Chair, if I may, let's step back and formally open the public hearing for this item. We do have someone that has signed up to speak.
Okay.
If you could, just open the public hearing.
So, I'd like to open the opportunity for public comments for property owners that live nearby.
Okay. I do have Mr. William Joiner, who has signed up to speak tonight.
Mr. Joiner, would you please approach? And I believe he has 3 minutes. Is that correct? If you'll state your name and your address.
My name is William Joiner, and I stay on State Mill Road, 1565 State Mill Road, and I stay behind that property about 5, it's going to be about 500 feet from my property. And really, I don't understand what they're getting ready to do, because we haven't been told about it, but I know that it will be rezoned, and I've been staying there probably about, we've been on that place, my house been there probably about 100 years, the property, with the house being there, because I redid the house. I bought the house probably about 50 years ago, and we've never had no problem with nobody up there, or either them being in that way. His place is on the other side, I never allowed him, and I stay on, he on the left side, I stay on the right side. So, I guess he bought the property that was a store there before, and the house is still there. And I want to know how it going to affect my property by zoning, where the property taxes go way high? Is that going to affect me with my property that I've been having about all my life, by the property taxes going up high because of the rezoning? Or what kind of effect would it have for me? Can they rezonate and leave my property just like it is? That's what I want to know.
Thank you very much.
That's my concern.
Anybody got any questions?
I have a question. I just heard him say that he has sent out letters, and you're only 500 feet away from it. Did you get a letter?
Yeah, I got a letter, that's why I'm here.
Okay. And do you have other neighbors that live around? I know you're the only one that's here.
Nobody stay, nobody stay around, there's a church down that far, but I'm the only one that stay right there in that part.
And is this your, that's the church up there. Is this your home right here, once you get on State Mill?
Yes.
Okay, so that orange square, just to give everyone an idea, it says residence there, and that there's a church a little bit further up. And I'll answer your question if you don't mind. So, the zoning of this property will not affect the adjoining or even the properties across 11 there as far as their personal tax values. This rezoning request also will not affect your property at all. It would stay as residential. So, hopefully, that answers those questions, both the taxes and property values, you know, the property values I can't speak to, but the taxes, specifically the zoning, will not affect that property or the surrounding ones. And this is site-specific for this general commercial request tonight, so it won't affect your, the zoning of your property at all.
Okay, sir, I have another question. Sir, is that?
She had a question for you, sir.
Is that satisfactory to you, and would you like for them to send you a letter stating that, that statement?
Yes, ma'am, it's satisfactory.
Okay.
I have no problem with it.
Thank you. Mm-hmm.
Thank you for your comments. Board, is there any other comments to be made?
I have a question. Thank you. So, is this, since it's conditional zoning, does that mean that it is, as long as that business is operating there, it is that zone?
Yes, ma'am. So, if for some reason they sold or moved and went to the city of Greenville, somebody could purchase the property and operate the same use, but if they wanted to put something else out there, they would have to come back through this process. It is very much specific to, not the owner, because a new owner could do the same business there, but the use specifically. So, if they ever sold and somebody wanted to come in and put a house on there, rezonate back to residential, or operate some other kind of commercial, they'd have to come back and apply for another conditional district for that use specifically.
Okay, so, no, somebody couldn't come and put a gas station there?
Not at, if this was approved as is, they would have to come back with a whole new application at that point.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to interject. I think that's all the public we had, so if we could close the public hearing, we can go into the discussion. That was the only thing I was going to suggest.
I'm remiss, or may I, I'd like to close the public comments. I believe we have another question.
I do want to clarify. So, this is an active business already?
Correct. My understanding is they purchased the property a couple of years ago, just a shell building. What I was told, their agent led them to believe that it was fine to move forward. So, they've been in operation. The only reason it came to our attention, they wanted to, they made application with environmental health to add this new building out there, to remove those Conex containers and put a new storage building out there to expand the business. At that point, we kind of popped the brakes. At that point, it's a non-compliant property.
And so, the implications of not approving this on those Conex trailers is what?
So, if this doesn't get approved, it stays residential, that business cannot continue. It would be a violation, and they would have to cease operation.
And those Conex trailers would be out of ordinance as well?
Yeah, I mean, we look at those as more mobile personal storage, honestly, as opposed to like a permanent business or permanent structure. I don't know that we would be able to prevent them from storing personal goods in those containers until they found another site, per se, but the business itself would need to cease immediately, and we'd basically send a violation letter that they were not in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
So, is there, and this is coming off of the context sensitivity thinking, if this is approved and this new building is built, is there any implication on ensuring that those Conex trailers are removed, because I think they're less sensitive than the metal building?
I think that's a perfect example of a reasonable condition, that once the new building is constructed for storage, we put that as a condition, we could add that to that listed condition, the Conex containers are removed from the site. I think in this situation with this conditional zoning district, the ordinance kind of allows some of these reasonable conditions, that yeah, that was used for temporary storage, but once you have your new structure, because that's a significant size structure, what they want to put out there, I think adding a condition if this board sees fit to have those removed, I think that's a good point, and something I think Staff would support as well.
I would think that, in that, in light of that context sensitivity, I would think that would be something we'd want to have in there, so that we don't just continue to... that would be something we'd want to have in there, so that we don't just continue to build it, since it's a conditional district.
I, speaking from my opinion, I do see it as an improvement to the property if we remove those trailers and construct a properly constructed building in its place, and with the conditions that we can set forth can prevent that. With respect to the context sensitivity, I think the history of this board, we've looked at neighboring residential issues where they are right next door, or very close residential issues, and in great conflict with having a particular type of businesses that we've looked at in the past. In this case, we don't really have that issue.
Well, one point I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if I'll support this or not, but it would help if we had any conditions that there could be no outside storage of inventory, even though it may be storage. There's a considerable number of appliances that are now stored on Davenport Farm Road, hundreds of them, and they're just sitting out there behind the fellow's house, and it's not really that attractive.
I have a question. Is there any ordinance in place that would prevent you from having a Conex on your property?
No, sir. We kind of look at that as just a personal story. I think that's something we've just kind of seen grow in the past few years in the county, some of those businesses come into Pitt County, both businesses that use those to rent out or whatever, but also folks use them. Mostly, we see them for temporary use only, which I think those being there were kind of temporary as they were preparing to build a larger site. But we don't have anything that says you can't do that, because I think it's mainly viewed as temporary, you know, certainly understand potentially not being the most friendly thing to look at, you know, but there's just nothing in our ordinances that would prevent a property owner from doing that.
It's not quite a pod, but it's.
Right. It's not the same thing, because we are seeing those more frequently. And I will say with the conditions that staff proposed tonight that we went through in the slides, and any others that the board chooses to put on there, the applicant does have to sign off on that, and that is part of the packet that goes before the Board of Commissioners. So the applicant does have to consent to any conditions. That being said, if there's something they don't consent to and the board still wants them to, I think they can use that in their decision to make the ultimate decision, but the applicant does have to sign off to any conditions that the ones staff proposed in the presentation or any other that are added.
And Mr. Chairman, just to underscore what I was trying to say, I'm talking about the use of the land to store discarded washing machines, dishwashers, and refrigerators. I'm talking about that.
Yes, sir.
So I'm saying that the board, whatever the board does, it ought to preclude that because I think our planning staff takes the position that if you've got something that you're, that you're not going to have on there forever, and that's what you say, that they're not going to make them move it.
I believe that can be a condition of, because this is a conditional zoning.
Yeah, I think both of those, and I'll ask, if everybody can speak in the mic this evening since Tab's not here, she's going to have to listen to the recording of it so she can make sure she can record everything. But I think those are two conditions, if I'm hearing correctly, both that the Conex containers will be removed from the site once the new structure is constructed, and two, no outside storage of appliances. So either needs to be in these storage buildings existing or the new one, and that it doesn't become a salvage yard junk looking site, is what I'm hearing.
Exactly. Even though there might be screening, it still can't be that.
Sure. Yes, sir.
And I still want what I suggested for this gentleman back here, and later, that he would get a letter.
Yes, ma'am. I got that highlighted on my notice to make sure. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
So, Mr. Chairman, does the board have some about the future aesthetics of any type of residential that's going to be built out there alongside of this proposed rezoning that, I don't know, may not look the way that, you know, we might want it to look for people that are coming inbound on Highway 11, coming into Greenville? Is that a concern, or?
Well, to answer you, Mr. Chairman, I have that concern, and except for this 3.1 acres, the remainder would still be suburban residential and fully allowing residential use.
And I will speak to that briefly. With the landscaping plan that's required, there are some screenings. They can use the existing screening on the backside, but with it being in that highway corridor overlay, if you see on your screen there, it kind of, it's not laid out there, but typically, it's a tree every 40 feet, and then shrubs four feet on center. That won't screen the site, obviously.
Right.
But the attempt is to kind of make it more visually appealing, you know, some of these uses, we try to kind of, especially on a major highway like that, when folks are coming into Pitt County and Greenville, make it a little bit cleaner, you know, with some, you know, aesthetics coming in with those trees and shrubs to kind of give it that approach, and that's what those guidelines are kind of for.
That may be something that, you know, might be a consideration for someone that wants to, you know, purchase that property out there for residential, they may look at that, say, we don't like to get into that.
Yes, sir.
Kind of like what we were saying about that for a road.
Right.
That property is.
Yes, sir. Understand.
So, Board, you have some options here. Do anybody care to make a motion, a conditional motion?
So is it, is it an amendment, or is it?
So what I'm hearing is that if the board chooses to make a motion to approve the request with the conditions that staff provided, also with the two other ones, Conex containers being removed after the new building, and no outside storage of material, sale, the appliances, is what I'm hearing, if that's the way the board chooses to make a motion to approve with the conditions as presented with the two additional ones.
So I make a motion that the board approve the proposal as presented by staff with staff recommendations and the additional conditions of removal of the Conex containers after construction of a new building and no outside storage of appliances.
Second that motion. So we have a motion that has been proposed and seconded?
So there are two motions that the board needs to make, and that's kind of that consistency statement that I spoke to earlier. Let me pull that back up, I apologize. And this is basically the statement as presented, if the board's happy with this, y'all could vote on this before actually moving with Mr. Forbes' motion, but the consistency statement and the reasonableness for the public interest. So if we can get one motion first, if the board is comfortable with this as presented, and then we'll move forward to that second one with actual activity as presented. I apologize.
Does this include the staff recommendations, or?
Yeah, so basically, the statement that's signed has the same language, and then it has a statement at the end and additional conditions as outlined, and that will be attached to that, and that's signed by the chairman. So if the board is satisfied with this language here, it's basically stating that the request is consistent and in the public interest.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have a question of being on this too. Suppose we don't think the request is consistent, but the wisdom of the board is consistent with the comprehensive land use program?
So you're saying if it's not?
I mean, because the language says, the request is consistent. To me, it means the request by the applicant, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean as amended by the board.
Right.
Yeah, so this statement is the consistency statement saying that the rezoning request, the conditional rezoning request is consistent with the land use plan. And our land use plan does support this being a commercial property, commercially zoned property?
If it's contact sensitive, it does, yes.
Right.
But not if it's not contact sensitive.
Okay.
It doesn't.
Okay. I think that's just what this board needs to decide, if they find that it is meets those standards as presented.
I do have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
You have additionally the proposed use will be screened and buffer from adjacent residential. I understand this buffering with, with the greenery, the trees, but how is that different from the screened?
So the way the ordinance is outlined, so there's landscaping requirements, and it does allow that existing screening be used, and typically, what we've seen is that the existing screening is going to provide a better buffer than anything that the ordinance requires with those trees 40 feet on center and then four foot on center for the shrubs. So we do allow existing screening to be used, but on the highway specifically, and on either property line that doesn't have any existing screening, they would have to put in this landscaping requirements. That's what that buffer is speaking to.
Now, will that include the shared driveway? Would that have to meet the requirement to be either, I don't know, whatever type of, all the way back to where that residence is at? So will that driveway have to be paved, or?
Typically, NCDOT, when we send out the site plan for review, they typically always require that 50 feet from the edge of pavement is going to be required to be paved in some manner. So most likely, and that's DOT decision at that point, but most likely, both of those driveways that are utilized for the business would have to be paved, and typically, they require 50 feet from the edge of pavement.
Okay, but the homeowner would not have to share in that cost, correct?
Correct. I mean, I would assume that the property owner there, since it's a requirement of their approval, is going to be the one that kind of flips that.
I got kind of mixed up. Didn't he say his home was on State Mill Road?
Yes, sir. So the gentleman that spoke, he lives this orange square right here, if you can see my mouse on the screen. So it's across NC 11 and then up State Mill Road just a little bit. So he was within our 500 foot and got a notice, and came tonight to get a little bit more information about the proposal. So he is across NC 11, then up State Mill just a little bit.
So he wouldn't be using the same driveway?
No, sir. It's completely off-site.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, but I feel like we're peeling back an onion here. On that consistency, the, yes, the consistency statement, I just want to clarify, we are saying, and I know we've approved these before, but if you say something, that's the onion analogy. We're saying that the process of requesting rezoning is consistent, not that, because it blatantly says that the area requested for rezoning is suburban residential, and the future land use map, the area is predominantly agricultural and residential. So I just want to clarify, I think I know the answer, but I just want to clarify, we're saying the rezoning request is consistent. Is that correct?
Yeah, so basically, going back to that suburban residential area and looking at some of the factors that play in there, so that non-residential development should be designed in a context sensitive matter, which we spoke to, and can be considered on a case-by-case basis. But also, when staff makes their recommendation, we're looking at this and the other factors that, within that SR suburban residential designation, the property has frontage and access to a major highway, which NC 11 is, obviously. And then that SR is kind of also allowing the commercial here, you see there, the uses are allowed in the SR. So that's what we use to make our recommendation, that this area's been designated suburban residential, those qualifications are specific to that property since it is suburban residential, that the, that the request itself is consistent, because the suburban residential, it does have access to NC 11, a major highway, as well as suburban residential allowing some commercials. So I'm not sure if that's what we're getting at. Apologize if not.
So I guess what, we need to backtrack a little bit and have a motion statement that is, that this approval is consistent with our envisioned Pitt County 2045.
Yes, sir. That request from staff is just to adopt a consistency statement, and it's basically both of these comments here that it is consistent, but also.
Can we put that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, motion adopted as presented would be our recommendation.
Do we have a motion to?
I'll make the motion that we accept staff's recommendation, just that it meets the land use, has nothing to do with rezoning the properties, just saying that the land used, is this correct?
The consistency, yes.
Is consistent with our plan for the zoning that we call.
We have a motion?
Is that with the conditions?
No. This is before the rezoning.
Okay. I second the motion.
We have a second on our motion that the plan is consistent with the land use plan. I'd like to have a vote, raise your right hand for those who approve. And all those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. So now we go back to our motion to approve the rezoning. We did have a second on that, and I'd like to ask all those, well, actually, open it, any further discussion?
And who made that second? I know Mr. Forbes made that.
Mr. Best.
I see no further discussion, so I'd like to ask a vote by raising your right hand in favor of. All those opposed? We have a non-vote? We have an abstention. Motion does carry.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Now, I believe that is the end of that part of our agenda. We have some informational items for Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So good discussion tonight, a lot of new members, but these are the types of cases that come before this board, and you'll get more comfortable the further along we go and the more cases you hear, and I appreciate y'all working through that case. To close out the meeting, the last item on your agenda is the informational items. Included in that informational items are the departmental monthly reports for May, June, July, August, and September. So as the chairman mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, it's been quite a while since the board has had any business to attend to and met, so a lot of information as far as the monthly reports are involved in that package of yours. Also, there's some correspondence and articles pertaining to planning-related matters that have gone both before the Board of Commissioners for the county, as well as some information regarding zoning-related matters that have gone before the City Council in Greenville. So hope you take time to review those items in your agenda, and also, there's a lot of information in there about budget amendments. So since your last meeting, we've gone through a new budget for the county that started in July, and we have to make sure we get all of our grant funds and that sort of thing rolled over to the new budget. So that information's included in your packet, just so you're aware of those grant programs that our department's involved with. Also, want to remind everybody, we do have a planning department website. I encourage you to go to our website, view our ordinances, our plans, all of our activities, monthly reports are included on that website, so highly encourage you guys and the general public as well to visit our website, and it's listed on your screen there. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hill. I'd like to entertain.
Do you have a question for Mr. Hill?
Yes, sir.
Sure. Just a question. Because of the low amount of business we've had to do, I just want to clarify that I know last year, we made some changes to how Platts are reviewed.
Correct.
Does, I just want to know, does that have anything to do with the decrease in the amount of things we're hearing on the board?
I will tell you, we have seen a decrease in subdivision Platts being submitted to our office as well as rezonings. The only thing I can speculate as to why that is occurring is an election year. There's a lot of slowdown that occurs prior to an election just because of the unknowns that exist with the election, so that's the only thing I can attribute to not having meetings or not having items to go forward. I will tell you, while we haven't had a lot of rezonings, our subdivisions coming in, staff has been very busy catching up during this slowdown a little bit on enforcement cases for zoning and other activities within the department. But it's something to monitor moving forward. Hopefully, with the new year coming up, we can keep a track and see the activity level of the subdivision. Those items, I believe, are also included in those monthly reports, so you can kind of see how many Platts have been approved over those months.
Yeah, and I guess it's just that we, you know, as we entered into a phase that we didn't know what was before that we're aware of, what we're not seeing in this board because of changes we made, just to make sure we're still okay with that. I'm not saying we need.
We didn't make the changes that were made for us.
Right, but what are the implications of that?
Right, we accepted the changes.
As a chairman, I'd like to have a little leeway and comment as well. Thank you for, the board members for stepping up and being part of, you know, our county. It's very important. It's very important that we look at growth and I think everybody has witnessed that we're pretty serious about, you know, how that growth proceeds. I have a great interest in that subdivision change that we had done last year, I believe. And I'm, you know, interested in, I think the changes for us to bring that back to us has to occur at the state level, I think. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Then is that the county level?
That's at the local level, yes, sir. Does not require state action. That was a local decision. Again, that was done because it's an administrative process and as long as the developers are meeting the rules and regulations established in that ordinance, then the board must approve the plan. So it can be handled at an administrative level, which is what the board found to be true. Therefore, they granted staff the authority to approve those plans versus having to come before the board. And you guys hearing that it meets the requirements and having to approve it at your level.
My understanding is that state judicial cases said that we had no discretion. That's my understanding of it as a board.
It cannot be subjected.
And that the technical review committee is the only body that can decide it on the subdivision plan.
That's correct.
Isn't that your understanding?
Yes, that is the same understanding that I have. But we are also on the front line when neighbors have issues with those subdivisions that we're the recipient of those complaints to pass along to our county commissioners. So if there's no other further questions or comments, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.